Hi, good evening. I'm going to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Monday, March 9th. Going to ask Commissioner Donner if he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Secretary, if you could do the roll call?
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present.
So we'll move forward to item number one, approval of the meeting minutes from February 24th.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve the minutes. Second?
If you could vote, please. Okay, show that the minutes are approved with the vote of five to zero. So move forward to public comments. Do we have any requests to speak for this evening?
No, Chair Opal.
Okay, we'll move on to this evening's consent calendar. We have no items. So move on to item two, public hearing, which is a coastal development permit, CDP 20-0001, to allow additions totaling 859 square feet to an existing single-story, single-family dwelling located at 169 Monarch Bay Drive. And do we have a staff report?
Yes, Commissioner, may I introduce Danny Giometti for tonight's presentation?
Thank you for the introduction. Good evening, Chairwoman Opal, fellow commissioners. Project before you this evening is a request to allow additions of 859 square feet to an existing single-story, single-family home. So the 10,417-square-foot lot is located southwest of the intersection of Crown Valley Parkway and Pacific Coast Highway. It's zoned RSF4, residential, single-family 4, and it's also located within the appeals jurisdiction of the city's coastal overlay district. The lot's bordered by Monarch Bay Drive along both the northern side, or I'm sorry, just along the northern side. So these are the existing conditions. It's a relatively flat lot. Existing site improvements, shown in red here, and the pictures on to the right here, are 2,607-square-foot, single-story, single-family home with an attached 535-square-foot garage. There's an existing pool and spa onsite as well as landscaping and hardscaping. So the proposal is to add 859 square feet to the existing 2,607-square-foot, single-family home. This results in an updated gross floor area of 3,647 square feet. As you can see in the site plan here, the additions are shown in green. The existing conditions are shown in red there, so the existing gross floor area. Because the project results in an increase in square footage of more than 10% and is located within the coastal appeals area, a coastal development permit is required. This is the floor plan. As you can see, the living areas are shown in green and the garage is shown in yellow here. The additions totaling 859 square feet are proposed to be added to the entry, the kitchen and living areas. There's also the addition of a bedroom and two additional bathrooms, as well as an expansion into the garage. A portion of the existing garage will be converted into the laundry and pantry areas, which is why the garage addition is necessary. That's in order to maintain the required depth for the two required parking stalls. This is the front elevation of the home. All additions to the single-story home are under the city's height limit and they meet the prescribed development standards. The green line to the right indicates the building height as measured from the garage finished pad, which is the lowest point, to the top of roof. Like I said, these are, the addition is within the height limits for the city zoning. As you can see from the table on the screen, the project complies with all applicable development standards, including yard setbacks, lot coverage, and the required height limit. These are the finished materials for the updated, single-family home. The white plaster walls will be applied to the addition as well as the existing portions of the home. And there'll also be a limestone veneer entry, slate gray standing seam metal roof over the pitched portions of the roof, and then a gray gravel roof over the flat portions, which won't be visible. Openings include matte black metal trim windows and skylights and a modern black aluminum and glass garage door. This is the rendering of the home, of what it'll look like. The existing and new site walls will be finished also with a smooth, white plaster to match the exterior of the updated home. There's going to be a freestanding wall located in the front here. That's 42 inches high, and like I said, that'll be finished to match the home. There will also be a new Ipe wood entry and other side gates that are installed on either side of the property. New drought-tolerant landscaping and natural concrete flatwork will surround the exterior of the front of the home, and all improvements will blend together to update the overall look. Staff finds the project is consistent with the basis of approval for a coastal development permit, and the project's also consistent with the policies and provisions of the City of Dana Point General Plan, the Dana Point Zoning Code, and the local coastal program. Additionally, the findings contained in the draft Planning Commission resolution supporting approval for the proposed entitlement request can be made. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CDP 20-0001, subject to the conditions contained in the attached draft resolution. This concludes my presentation. The applicant and myself are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. I'll bring it back for Commissioner questions at this time.
Just one question, Danny. On G4, the map, plan, excuse me, site plan, on landscape at the top, it shows 1.10 existing landscape area?
Okay.
And then when I go back to L1, it looks to me like there's additional landscape that's included in front of the wall. Is that, was that new landscape?
Yeah, that's correct. So the new landscaping will be only on the front of the property. The existing landscaping in the back was recently done, as well as the pool and spa were updated. So that is the existing landscaping. That's to remain in the rear yard.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCann?
Thank you. Danny, in that image that you have on the screen right now, on the left side, it kind of looks like there's a garage door left of the garage door. On the plan, I don't see that. Are they doing something with the wall different there, or?
I believe that's a side entry gate. There's an existing wall there, and then there'll be a new six-foot-high wall that's beyond the 20-foot front yard setback. That's going to be finished with that same white stucco. And then the oversized gate will be placed in front of that. Actually, 1.23, yeah, new six-foot-high wall with La Habra stucco, finished color, crystal white. And then you have 1.19, which is the new wood gate. So the gate will be painted a black color.
Okay, because I'm looking at G4, and the gate looks like a standard-size man gate. But I guess it's just a little nuance of the maybe differentiation. It doesn't matter, I guess.
The applicant's available to potentially answer that question. But I think that that gate, I believe it's only on that small portion, and then the wall extends out towards the house.
Okay. And did the HOA review and approve this?
They did.
Okay, thank you.
No further questions? All right, I'll open it up for public comment. Are there any requests to speak?
No, Chair Opal.
All right, so I will close the public hearing and bring it back to Commissioner discussion.
The project looks like it's met all the requirements with no deviations, and the rendering looks excellent, and I fully support the project.
Anyone else? Commissioner McCann?
I agree with Commissioner Donner. I think that they've done a really good job to comply with all the codes, and I agree with the findings that it's in compliance with the zoning codes of the city.
Commissioner Nelson?
Kurt, it's a beautiful-looking house. I think the upgrades are fit well within the community and within that neighborhood. It's within our zoning code. It fits the general, I mean, it's consistent with all the applicable zoning standards. So I'll move this forward with a motion to approve. If I can find the actual number here. My apologies. Thank you. Coastal development permit, CDP 20-0001, to allow the additions totaling 859 square feet to an existing, single-story, single-family dwelling located at 169 Monarch Bay Drive.
Second?
Okay, if you could vote, please. And that's approved with unanimous vote this evening, so congratulations on that and good luck with your project. So moving on to item E, Old Business, the 2019 Annual Housing Element Progress Report. And I'm assuming there's a report this evening?
Yes, there is. Belinda Dynas will provide a presentation, please.
Thank you, Belinda. Good evening, Chair Opal, Planning Commissioners. My name is Belinda Dynas, staff planner, and I'm pleased to present to you the 2019 Housing Element Annual Progress Report, commonly referred to as the APR, in compliance with state regulations for the City of Dana Point's housing unit production reporting. In December 2013, the City of Dana Point adopted the 2014-2021 Housing Element, which is one of the seven required elements of the city's general plan. The city's current housing element, which was reviewed and approved by California Department of Housing and Community Development, also called HCD. Each jurisdiction is required to update their housing element every five-to-eight-year cycle. The city is currently in year seven of an eight-year cycle. The city's adopted housing element provides policies and programs geared toward achieving the city's fifth-cycle goals of the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, also known as RENA. The city's fifth-cycle RENA allocation was determined by Southern California Association of Governments and is shown in the green chart. Housing units are categorized by income categories in the first column. The city's housing units constructed to date since 2014, the city's RENA allocation, and the shortfall for each of these income categories. The city has made progress on moderate-income units with for sale units at South Cove and promoting construction of accessory dwelling units during the cycle. However, approximately 91% of the total housing units constructed in this cycle have been above moderate income. The purpose of this APR is to report on the city's housing unit production within the 2019 calendar year. In 2019 specifically, there were a total of 96 housing units that were issued permits, of which 80 of those units are condos at South Cove and eight new homes at the strands of Headlands. Nine accessory units were issued permits, and 40 units had received discretionary planning approval. The city encourages construction of accessory dwelling units, also known as second units and granny flats, especially with new state legislation effective January 2020. These units are allowed in existing residential neighborhoods and are intended to be small-scale and ancillary to main primary residents. Effective last year, city staff developed an affordability methodology, which was developed and accepted by HCD to justify ADUs as qualifying toward RENA as low and moderate-income units. As you can see in the attached APR in comparison to previous years, there's a new report format, which was required by the state. In 2017, Assembly Bill 897 and Senate Bill 35 required significant modifications to the annual report, which includes project and unit-level reporting data by assessor parcel number and address. Some of the key changes include reporting housing unit and project milestones for planning approval, building permits, and certificate of occupancy. The city continues to report on RENA progress and program implementation. It should be noted that tables C, E, and F are not applicable to the city's current housing element, and therefore, no data is provided. City staff has been working in preparation of the upcoming sixth-cycle RENA, which will be effective June 30th, 2021, to October 15th, 2029. In December 2018, SCAG began the sixth-cycle RENA process to determine the regional allocation methodology and allocation for the city. HCD had determined that the SCAG region will need to accommodate a total of over 1.3 million units in this next eight-year period. Based on the approved methodology to distribute the 1.3-plus million units, the city's draft allocation is a total of 529 units and broken down into four different categories for affordability. The estimator on the SCAG's website calculates the required units by income category, by percentage, and other methodology factors. It's important to note and come to my attention that the numbers on page 5 and 6 do not tally to 529 and is off by 1. And so we will reach out to SCAG staff to correct that discrepancy. This month, city staff will request a, release a request for proposals for consultant services to prepare the housing element update. The city must obtain certification of the housing element by HCD by October 15th, 2021. In conclusion, following this public hearing, the city council will also receive the APR on March 17th. The APR is then required to be sent to HCD and the State Office of Planning and Research by April 1st. It is recommended that the Planning Commission receive and file this APR for 2019, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
So is there any questions of the commissioners?
I see that we didn't meet our target of 327, so now our new target is 530. Is that correct?
If you refer to the slide above, we've actually, in this planning period, which ends in 2021, we've actually built more than the RENA target for our cycle. And so our target number is 327 units, and to date, we have built 446 units. The caveat to that is that we're encouraged to build very low, low- and moderate-income units, and based on the policies and the overall development thus far within this cycle, we have not been able to achieve those goals.
So as it relates to those goals, one question I have on the carry-forward. Does that go on top of the 529? Or do we know?
It does not. And so there is a very complicated process that we have gone through in the past year to develop a methodology. There is a component of existing need that is included in the methodology to get to that 529 number. Existing need is not necessarily what we've built, so there's no credit for the things that, for the units that have built in the fifth cycle. But there is a consideration of, which is new to this cycle, existing units that need to catch up to what the overall need is. So it's a combination of existing and projected need for growth.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one question for you, Belinda. For the 1.3 million, what is the SCAG regional area? What does that region consist of?
So it's basically Southern California minus San Diego County. So it includes Ventura County out to San Bernardino and down to Imperial County. And so it's quite a large expanse of jurisdictions that are covered under this regional allocation.
Thank you. Commissioner McCann, did you have a question?
Yeah. Are there any proposals on the table that you're aware of at the state level to simplify and accelerate the SEQA approval processes for housing? And if so, can you please expand on them?
Sure. So it seems like every year is a housing package filled with mechanisms to streamline the housing development process, including SEQA. I know that SB 35 had provisions for streamlining specifically as part of the 2017 housing package. So there's different factors that go into play in terms of Project Housing Accountability Act and things of that nature. So there's, I don't, can't recall if there's anything out of the 2019 specifically to SEQA, but as I mentioned, SB 35 would be applicable to Dana Point specifically in the areas that are not located in the coastal zone.
All right, so for this, we just need to receive and file, correct? No voting?
That's correct.
Thank you. Except are there no more comments, questions? Yes?
One other question. When they develop this, is there any consideration for cities that are fully developed? Because there's not a whole lot of room for that. Is that taken into consideration?
The idea is to create and plan for future development of housing. And in the places where they are technically built out, where their zoning code or their general plan, you know, is limited, the state is asking for policies that expand that. There are certain targets for putting jobs closer to housing, especially in terms of greenhouse gas reductions that play into different factors and actually the RENA methodology itself. And so greater housing unit numbers were allocated to cities where there are job centers. You will see that for Dana Point specifically, we actually have a lower number compared to other jurisdictions because we're, technically, we don't have proximity to a job center and access to transit. So we actually have a lower number than others. And so when we look at overall the RENA allocation, it is, the state is asking for jurisdictions to change their policies to accommodate for this growth.
Okay, so now we will move on to Old Business, item number four, a workshop on Local Coastal Plan Amendment, LCPA 19-0002, Zoning Text Amendment, ZTA 19-0002, related to accessory dwelling units, parking, and public notification. And again, have a report.
Yes, Sean Nicholas will provide the report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Wosniewski, Chair Opal, Planning Commissioners, Sean Nicholas, Senior Planner. So we have before you is the Zone Text Amendment and LCPA Amendment that we've brought forward a couple times. It's taken a couple different shapes. And again, we're here for a public workshop to discuss these items and hopefully get them moving forward then with the formal review process. We're going to hit on joint-use parking facilities. That should be fairly quick. Just again, confirming that we're maintaining what we had previously discussed. And then talking quickly about the public notification improvements, and then talking about some of the things we were just talking about, actually, with our new ADU requirements that just came into play starting January 1st, 2020. And majority of our discussion this evening is going to be centered around that ADU discussion. So jumping right in, again, this is just to show that, based on our previous discussion confirmed at the November Planning Commission workshop, that would be to expand the joint use of parking facilities from the 300 feet as it is to a quarter-mile. That language has been provided to you again and is included as attachment 2, which is the full proposal language for this update. This is one of the two new things that is before the commission this evening, but staff leaves this fairly straightforward. It has actually originated out of the 2018 efforts that in discussions we had regarding public notification of projects, and with the goal being to approve public awareness of projects coming for public hearing. And so Planning Commission at that time had requested staff to evaluate ways in which we could do more with public notification. And so staff has identified two ways that we provided to you this evening to improve that and increase public awareness. The first of which is increasing notices being sent out, whether it's the 300-foot radius or 500-foot radius, depending on the type of application, is increasing it from 10 to 14 days. And what that does is two things. One, it makes it consistent with what we now are required to do with town center. So now it's all one consistent process that we have, which is always nice. Secondly, the way it is with the 10-day mailers would go out, typically residents would get the notification approximately a Wednesday or Thursday before a Monday Planning Commission meeting. And oftentimes, that led to members of the public frantically and sometimes to come and trying to get ahold of staff and meet with us to go over these projects or answer their questions about them. And so this will now allow them to get a little bit earlier in the week and allow staff more opportunities to sit down with these residents and hopefully address their questions and, you know, answer these things that maybe wouldn't be such a great concern to them if they knew we're able to get that information and access to us more easily. So we think across the board as staff that this is going to be a positive for consistency reasons and also for just, again, better public communication, which is important to all of us. Additionally, just in terms of a onsite notification, staff is proposing that we utilize something consistent with what we do already for coastal development permits in the community. We just require a posting onsite, and we've provided you some language again on how that would work and function. We've tried to develop it to be flexible, depending on the type of project site, if you will, something versus an interior use in town center versus maybe a more open land area where there's more room to post things. So we feel, again, that this is already part of our normal course of work. Wouldn't be an overburden to staff. And again, provides that notification out in the field that seemed to be one of the things that was triggered in the discussion from 2018. So unless there are any questions, I'm going to move forward here to ADUs. Oh, Commissioner McCann?
What would that onsite public hearing notice or posting look like? Or let's say for, you know, someone's, like, the project we had today on a single-family lot?
So what it would be is that we've identified for three 11-by-17, we envision that it will go on like a yellow, a yellow 11-by-17 piece of paper, and it'll be put in a sleeve, so that way it's protected from the elements, is the words that I was looking for. And it would pretty much be the mailing, like, the first half of the mailers, right? Notice of public hearing and blown up, so that way it's easily can be seen and can be posted at three points along the front property line. So again, anyone coming by, walking by in the neighborhood, for in this particular example, or driving through, hey, something's posted here. What's going on? And then I'll just make them aware, and they can stop and pull over or stop when they're walking their dog and read it. And so it would give them that opportunity. Similarly, we might not be able to post at certain locations, for example, like in the row. If they were doing something in the row that required some kind of public hearing, we might have them put one of those hearings just in their window or in one of the other multi-tenant facilities we have in town centers. So for a new hair salon, that's a pretty common one. We have to deal with a lot. So they would have to put it in their window and then maybe at the entrance and exit where they'll have more. So again, people coming by, driving by, will see, oh, there's, you know, identification onsite and then actually notice on the suite, so people can see where that's going. So that's staff's vision.
Okay, thanks. Relative to mailers, it would be my recommendation, we get a lot of people that come in here and they want to ask questions about the project. And they post questions to us as commissioners about the project as if we're supposed to answer them. And then the chairman dutifully tells them, this is not a question-and-answer period. I'm sorry, work with staff. So I would recommend that in any mailed notifications, there's some kind of an all-caps, bolded thing that says, hey, people with questions are strongly encouraged to, you know, discuss with staff first before the hearing. Don't show up at the hearing and think you're going to get some questions answered, because you're not. And it's just a, it's just kind of, I don't want to say it's misleading to people because we're not misleading them, but they don't know how the process works. And then they end up not being really able to effectively communicate what's going on.
Thank you.
Quick, probably more of a comment, or I'll start with a question. So on the parking requirements under B, the requirement to have an attractive and adequate pedestrian path or sidewalk, can we be more definitive? Because that seems pretty vague. I mean, what is that?
I think that that language is existing as it is in the code. So if there is interest to defer that further, I think in terms of as this is designed, its primarily focus is probably utilization in the town center area in which we do have sidewalks that are located throughout.
But I guess my question would be if we had two properties that were within a quarter mile distance and they were connected with city sidewalks, would that meet this standard?
Yes, sir.
So I would think we would want to be clear about that. I'll leave it to you guys to decide ultimately, but the vagueness of this would leave it subjective to a denial if it doesn't have the right flowers.
Understood.
So that's it.
Sean?
Yes, sir.
When we talked about notifications, one of the things that we said is electronic notifications would be really helpful. And in neighborhoods, there's blast emails that go out. We have social media and the city has a site and maybe on the notices that are mailed, you could refer people to an electronic location, whether it's the city or social media, where people could see something graphically of what was being proposed. So I would make that three items instead of two.
Thank you.
So I guess before we move on, are there any other questions on the public parking facilities or on the notifications? So we'll just move on to the accessory dwelling units.
So as we all went through this process back in two thousand and seventeen, here we are once again with our zoning ordinance being thrown out by our fine colleagues and friends at the state and getting to go through this whole lovely process again. And so before you, we have a number of items and particularly attachment one of your staff report this evening, which includes a breakdown of the two state statutes comparing twenty seventeen and twenty twenty. The third column of which also describes our local ordinance, which is laid out in attachment two, and then additional options for consideration. So what staff has done in terms of our approach is we've tried to develop something and worked very closely with the city attorney's office to draft something that is compliant with state law, especially for as we talked about earlier in Ms. Dynas's presentation, that these are going to be part of our arena numbers and the importance that they're going to play in meeting those requirements as part of our housing element update even moving forward. So what we're, the focus of my presentation moving forward is going to be utilizing that table one attachment. And I've highlighted the areas in which there's some options. So I'm going to focus my discussion on those options for planning commission feedback. But I just want to make it clear, if there's anything, if you have an unclear, if something's not clear to you about something else that maybe I don't necessarily cover, that you want to ask a question about just because it's not going to be something I'm going to focus on, please feel free to interrupt and to get me those questions. So with that, I'm going to jump right in and kind of highlight the fact of our first kind of major change to the code is that previously the requirement was only to, we would allow it in all residential zoning districts, but they can only be allowed associated with single-family residential units. Now that has changed and as you can see there is that we have modified it consistent, our proposed language there, the third column, we've modified it to be consistent with state law, allowing in all residential zones in conjunction with both single, existing or proposed single-family residential or an existing multifamily residential. And that's again consistent with the state statute. So there is options that the statute does give commission should you decide to allow it for ADUs to be developed in other zones that would allow residential units. So for example, if we wanted to consider them to be as part of any kind of our mixed use developments would be one such example, any of our mixed use zoning districts would be an example of that. So that was one of the things, again, we've drafted it to be consistent with state law, but we wanted to see if there was any interest to expand that out to other zoning districts.
Well, I have a couple clarifying questions relative to the calculation here. So when you look at the language, it's twenty-five percent of what? So are we talking unit count or twenty-five percent of the total square footage under a habitable space? And I think you ended with a pretty significantly different outcome depending on which one of those you use.
No, and thank you Commissioner Nelson and what for everyone following, that's actually to the number of units that right below the zoning designation allowed. And I think especially our city attorney has very strong feelings of the way the state statute is written in that particular portion is that it is probably the most unclear component of the entire state law that they have forced upon us. Based on a pretty extensive review as well as talking with city attorneys, looking at the APA, looking at other types of, you know, the local governments, looking for other jurisdictions and people who are also tackling this, it seems to be twenty-five percent of the existing units that is not square footage. So for an example, if you were to have a duplex, an existing duplex, you could have up to twenty-five percent of the units at least with at least one ADU attached. So twenty-five percent of two is a quarter, right, which is less than one. So you're only going to get one because you're allowed to have one ADU. Okay? Now if it's eight, if you have eight units, twenty-five percent is two units. So you could have up to two units because it's twenty-five percent of the unit. So doing, go looking very closely line by line, word by word of the state statute and looking again at some of these other examples, this we believe was the intent of what they're going for. We believe this is consistent with what other jurisdictions have also followed in terms of this policy. And that also then does include the fact that they are allowed to have a maximum of two detached ADUs for any multifamily. And this is again only for existing. This is not for any new proposed. These are existing multifamily residential units. The state statute is very clear on that. So that's the way we've interpreted, that's the way that we've done our research to do it, to answer your question. That's the approach that staff is taking.
Got it. Okay, so how do you reconcile, especially in multifamily, the size of those units relative to what our limits are on the max size that we can, you know, we've got eight hundred and fifty square feet proposed and many apartments, that's, that's a studio. That's a normal unit. So it's actually not an ADU anymore, it's an additional apartment.
So this is great. This is actually leading us to our next actually option here of discussion points has to do with square footage of units. And again, the way that the state statute is written is there is a whole wide variety of limitations. And so what staff has done, that third column, is that we have said for any ADU that is one bedroom or less, the maximum square footage is eight hundred and fifty square feet. If it is a, and this is for detached, to make it clear, detached. If it is two bedrooms or more detached, you can go up to a thousand square feet. If you're going to be attached, it's fifty percent of the existing primary living space, the existing living space. So in order to answer your questions, that's the maximum. It could be less. I mean, the minimum allowed by state law is you have to have at least allow for a hundred and fifty square feet, which is, let's be honest, it's probably going to be an efficiency unit, right? That's what they actually call it in state law. You have to allow for at least one efficiency unit of a hundred and fifty square feet, which is, you know, teeny tiny. So I would say that to address that question, how that's work, we have maximum limitations. We only haven't really put in a minimum limitations as it says in there as the optional regulations. That's one of the options that you can put a minimum requirement of X number of square feet. It just can't be less than a hundred and fifty. So that's, that's what we have done again based on state law, what we believe others have done based on looking at other jurisdictions and working again with the city attorney's office, we feel that that's a very reasonable and again consistent with the statutes of state law. Again, whether or not you want to allow for increased room numbers, increased square footage, or again even decreased size, as long as you do not go below a hundred and fifty square feet, you're okay. And again, there's some other limitations that are provided to you in attachment one later on and we have them up here. And any recommendations or thoughts that you have, we'll obviously take all those notes and we'll verify to make sure that any of the proposed recommendations that we're not skirting up against something we can't do, but those are the types of things that, you know, we're open to hearing and if there's any opinions.
Should we save all those till the end? What was your preference?
It's at the...
I'd be happy to let you go through the whole thing and then I'll go through my list of comments and thoughts.
All right, that's fine with me. So I think we've just covered those primary two issues that we have before of us is that you could allow it in potential additional areas of our town as that allow for residential in some form or fashion. And then you do have some wiggle room in terms of what you would want to designate in terms of bedroom counts and size and square footages. So this is going to be probably the, I would say, the primary last three key optional requirements in terms of things the planning commission to consider. First off is setbacks. Previously, it was pretty much whatever was required by fire safety in terms of setbacks. This twenty twenty ADU law is pretty specific that in the side and rear setbacks that you have to allow a maximum of a four foot side yard setback. So what that means is, is that the twenty foot front yard or whatever the front yard setback for the underlying zoning would still apply in this situation, but for the rear and the sides, which are typically in the range of approximately five feet in the side and typically fifteen to twenty-five feet in the rear, that they are allowed to go up to four feet of those side and rear property lines. So again, oh, and it's important to note that the statute does particularly call out that any legally existing accessory structure that may be even closer, that may be on the PL, that legally exists, as long as they get a, a, a building permit to convert it into living space, that they are able to, they don't have to shift it over the four feet, they're allowed to maintain it there even if it's less than four feet because it's an exist, legal existing accessory structure. But any new construction, you're allowed to go up to that four feet on the side of the rear. And the option there is if, you know, should you decide to allow for more flexibility as well, that the state statute does allow for that flexibility. Additionally, kind of interrelated with the side yard setback and the rear yard setback is it, in that same portion of the statute, it talks about that the ADU shall be limited to sixteen feet in height. So that's what we've done is for any ADU, just across the board, is the maximum height can be sixteen feet. And so again, the option there would be if planning commission wanted to consider in some form or fashion or way, additional potential height and how, and, you know, we can have a discussion about how that maybe could be, how that could occur. And then the last thing to highlight here is that again, the state has really put limitations, continued limitations on when parking is required and when you're, what kind of required parking is, comes into play. So it's pretty much kept the same thing as you could have, it requires in essence one parking space per ADU. And that's what we've written into our, into our code this evening. But as we all know, they've written in a whole number of caveats in which parking isn't going to come into play. First and foremost is the common thing that we're seeing is the conversions of our garages. Someone can convert our existing two car garage into an ADU and they don't need to replace their, their parking. Similarly, that detached legally existing accessory structure in the rear that, you know, again, obviously we're adding bedrooms, we're adding a dwelling unit onsite because it's an existing square footage. It does not require parking by state law. And then that second, that I guess fourth line there where it says no parking required if, this is again consistent with what had previously, what we had reviewed in twenty seventeen, again, that if you're within also a half mile of public transit, part of an existing dwelling or accessory, which we just talked about, on-street parking permits not offered to ADUs or within a half, a block of car vehicle share within, within one block of a car vehicle share. So to take a look at, what is that half mile thing? Because what does that really mean in terms of our greater community? We thought probably the best way was to show commission, what does that really mean? So here on the board is, you can see all those green dots are bus stops and this is accurate by OCTA routes and bus stops here in the city within the end of twenty nineteen. And it's important to note, this is as the bird flies. The state statute says is walking, right? So it's really difficult unless you have a case by case basis to do that. So we provided you this sample to kind of give you a sense of this area. So you can see all those interacting loops here within our, within our jurisdiction. And going a step farther, here's it to make it opaque. So what is this really showing us? Is only the areas where it's not really touched by any of that covered area would be the areas that would then be potentially unless it qualified for one of those other exceptions, conversion of existing space or was part of a, a, a parking district, which none of those areas that are uncovered are part of, or, or if it's within a block of a car share, which none of them are, those would be the very limited areas within the community that the one parking space for any new kind of created ADU where that parking would be required. So you can see that a vast majority of the city is covered off by that half mile radius. So lastly, as you can see, a majority of these are pretty straightforward in terms of just consistent, again with state statute, there's not a lot of options. Some of the key things that we have done is just making sure that any addition or any accessory structure, any accessory dwelling unit, any addition for these structures, they have to be architecturally compatible. I think that's always important. We want to make sure our neighborhoods are looking consistent. We are still continuing to require, as you can see, allowed in legal structures. There is a fee waiver. It's important to note, just in general, one of the key things that the state did put out this time, I just want to highlight, while there's not a lot of options there for the, the planning commission to make any decisions really on, is that anything less than seven hundred and fifty square feet in terms of an ADU, there's no development impact fees that are put onto them. So that's, seems to be a, a big positive for the applications that we have received thus far. I think we've only received about two or three applications this year, so pretty steady or standard for what has been our, what we've seen over the last three years as well. And again, the key component here on this top one is that it has to be, that we're going to be utilizing all of these ADUs as part of our arena numbers. Belinda always tries to get everyone to do an ADU with every project they do. So she's big into that. So again, that, that kind of concludes staff's presentation in terms of the ADU. We just kind of follow that. It sounds to me that we'll, I'll push this back into some of these discussion points. And I think at this point, staff's really looking for both planning commission feedback and does recommend opening up to the public for, also to take any public comments. I want to point out that we did right before the meeting, did receive an email that was provided to you at the dais. Our admin machines did distribute those, so you did receive a copy of that as well. So with that, I turn back over to Chair Opel.
So with that, do I just do commissioner comments or public hearing first or?
You can do it whatever way you prefer. If the commission has questions and would like to ask those first before public comment, that's fine, or open it up to public comment first, whatever you think is most beneficial to the discussion.
All right, thank you. Then we'll just open it up for commissioner comments at this time.
Thank you. Is, was there any discussion or what are the requirements or lack of requirements regarding separation of ADU to main structure?
Yes, we actually did have an extensive discussion on this and based on our discussions with the city attorney and evaluating it, we have written in there, I believe that the, that the...
Sean, I think that was in one of the draft ordinances that we were going back and forth on. We did conclude that the separation, building separation requirements would apply, I believe off the top of my head, that's ten feet.
Yes.
But, but I guess my question is, it's not, is that not specified in the state update?
It's not. There's nothing in the state law regarding building separation requirements.
So similarly, it doesn't talk about front yard, for example, right? So that's why the, based on what we've talked with our colleagues in other jurisdictions as well as the work the city attorney has done, that's why we, it's been consistent that front yard setback, whatever the underlying zone requires is what we are similar requiring. Similar type of thing, we directly... Similar type of thing, we directly discuss it even as a group with the city attorney, the, the 10-foot building separation requirement and that would come be applicable.
Okay, thanks. What about garage conversions? Can you be a little bit more specific? Are those kind of allowed now by right or, or they're, are they discretionary at all?
So it's important to note that every ADU always requires a building permit, right? And so it's, it is the conversion of a legally existing space of an ADU can occur. Now, the only cav- slight caveat I give is, you know, in the coastal zone, we do have provisions in here that there is some notification that has to occur associated with, you know, potential conversions of this space within our coastal areas. But other than that, yes, generally, you know, in a very high level kind of widespread, generally, yes, it is with an approval of a building permit, you can convert an existing legally existing garage, yes.
Okay, but then, and, and we would, the applicant would not have to replace those parking spaces for the existing, but do they have to provide a new parking space for the ADU?
No, because the, again, it, because you are converting existing legally existing square footage, the state statute says that that does not require extra parking. It does not require parking for the ADU, nor does it require replacement parking for the parking you've now lost.
But if you were constructing a new detached ADU in your rear yard, then you have to also provide a parking space for that new construction ADU?
If you were in one of those areas that we talked about, very limited, that didn't, were not within that half-mile bubble, potentially, yes.
Okay. What about, is there any discussion of separate meters for the ADUs?
State statute does not allow for a separate meter, does not require separate meters. Now, if a applicant wants to go through that process, they would be able to, but we cannot require it to be done.
Okay, but you guys would block it either?
I, I believe that it's not staff's intention is to block it if they wanted to put in a new water meter or a new gas meter. Well, water meter would be through the water district, but if they wanted to have, to go and separate that out and go through the structural components of that, I don't think that's something that staff would oppose.
Okay, thank you.
Because they cannot sell these separately still regardless.
Right, and, and the whole thing about relatives only, that's been dropped?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I guess I'm, I'm kind of, you know, I looked at your circle map, which I thought was, you know, very well done. And it almost seems to me like we'd be better off to simplify it and just call the whole city consistent with that. I mean, it's, it's gonna be difficult for you guys to kind of review on a case-by-case basis and make judgment calls, is it or is it not? Whatever. I mean, it affects so little of the city that I would, I would suggest you just make it all that same uniform thing and then not have to tell that guy, hey, you don't get this because your neighbor is one house closer and, you know.
And that's one of the, the options you have, so that's important feedback for us, so thank you.
Okay, those are my comments or questions.
Okay. Get out your pen, pencil.
I am, sir. Ready to go.
Alright. So starting with number, so the first, going back to the original question and comment around the multifamily, what I do want to suggest that we look at is limiting, if we are allowed to, which I'm not clear if we are, to studios only for multifamily properties. So we end up, we're not in a situation where we're actually putting bigger units in that aren't already there. That if we limit that to, you know, if you think about the, the, what an ADU started as years and years ago was a granny flat. And if you look at our definition of a granny flat, it specifically was for no more than two people. And they had to be related. Now, we've, we've sort of nixed that piece, which, you know, I think ADUs are good. I think they, they are one of the many solutions to some of our housing challenges, but I think we'd be careful that they're not at the, at the cost of the neighborhood that they're going into. So as it relates to the multifamily, I would suggest, and, and I think to, to your point, Commissioner McCann, you know, the, the parking thing is what it is, you know, there's a limited amount of the city that doesn't, that is not impacted by the, the relief, so I would, I, I do concur with you on that note that we should just, the whole city, you know, they, they meet that requirement, so that parking space issue for the very few that would need it doesn't, isn't required. But that being said, the trade-off would be that we would limit on the multifamily to a studio only, if we're allowed to do that. And so we don't end up with, you know, 1,100 square foot ADUs on an apartment site that has, you know, 800 square foot bed, units. The second would be on the single family, that we limit those to one bedroom only. And again, to the, to the, the idea that the whole city's gonna benefit from the, from the lack of parking requirements and so what we don't want to do is let someone have a two-bedroom unit and not have to park that one as well. Third, on the, you answered the question on building separation, that's good. The height, so I know we have a, a restriction on limiting to sixteen feet. Obviously, where my assumption is that does not apply to the junior ADU, is that true?
That would correct because you would create the junior ADU out of existing square footage and then the only additional area you're creating is a maximum you can add on is 150 square feet for the sole purpose of creating exterior access.
It could be a staircase, basically.
Exactly. It could be on the second floor if that was part of the area they were doing, yes.
Okay, so I would include in our regulations as you draft this all up that ADUs are limited to single-story units only, max 16 feet. Junior ADUs can be contained within the, within the, on the second floor, basically, of a existing home. But within the envelope of the existing residential district incident. So whatever the height limits are in that district would be the limit of the junior ADU. But the detached ADU would be no taller than 16 feet. I do have a question on the tandem parking, so I, I don't know that it even matters at this point if we're not gonna be requiring parking that we don't, it does, it becomes sort of a moot point, but I would be curious to know that if, if we ended up with a parking requirement, how does, you know, our existing code, which doesn't allow you to count for parking in the driveway, how does that sort of change or does it?
So actually, what that does exactly refers to in the state code is that the tandem is in the parking, so before, right now in our code, you have to be in a garage in essence, or we have that very limited area where a duplex with a narrow lot can have the one. This would then allow across the board, your parking in your driveway to count towards the way you can create that extra parking space, so.
But it'd only be for the ADU component, right?
Technically count for that ADU, yeah.
So it wouldn't expand someone's ability to add another bedroom if that bedroom wasn't considered a ju- a junior ADU?
Say that again.
So if you have a five-bedroom house, let's say, and you add a ADU to your backyard and then you add a junior ADU, so now you have, or another bedroom, I'm sorry. No, no junior ADU, just a sixth bedroom, which kicks in an additional parking space requirement. Would the tandem then be allowed to be used if we don't have a parking requirement for the ADU in the first place?
So, no.
Okay.
Because what you're, what you're thinking about is that you add up those things, but you have to remember that technically each of those are different uses on the site. You have the primary, you have a junior ADU and then you have an ADU. Those are all actually three physically separate uses. And so you don't take the four plus the one plus the two, which I agree with you by our code will require three parking spaces. It, it doesn't work that way. Still, for the main house, if they had the two-car garage and they maintained the two-car garage and still added on the ADU and the detached and it didn't need the parking for the detached, they would still be compliant with, just with that two-car garage.
Not if they had six bedrooms, though.
Well, if they had as part of the primary residence, yes. If they had six bedrooms, they would have to add then a third car.
Okay.
Third car, but that has to do with just the primary use, has nothing to do with the ADU or the JAD.
Okay. Next one is the note about deed restricting for short-term rentals. And I guess the question would be, they're not allowed anywhere in the city unless you already have a short-term rental permit. So what, sort of feels like we're adding a layer that isn't needed, but we'd love to get your take on that.
So we are already deed restricting units already and the state law, state statute, I should say, is very particular about that and, and, and actually really supporting cities to do these types of deed restrictions. And so since we've already done it and we have been doing it, we have everything in place. It's a free, it doesn't cost anything to our, to our applicants. We do all of the notarization here on site and so just for consistency, we're just, our recommendation is to continue that process.
And just to clarify real quickly, state law requires that we're not allowed to allow these units to be rented out for 30 days or less. It doesn't require deed restriction though necessarily. The deed restriction is really staff's way to enforce that provision.
Gotcha, okay.
But they also make it clear that they're not to be used as short-term rentals in the state statute.
Okay. Do we have development impact fees here, other than the school district and the couples in the water and sand district?
Yes, sir, we do. Happening to do with the regional transportation corridor, those types of things.
The toll roads?
Exactly.
But do we get to choose on that or is that, if it's over the 750 and the toll roads decide they want to get their money, do they, we have to collect it, right?
Yes, that's, so how it works beyond the 750, it's a percentage. Then you kind of get that free 750 and then beyond that, it's a percentage of the existing square footage is how it's calculated. And as the commission knows me with math, it's a dangerous thing here at the dais, so I will save you that. But I will tell you, is there is a formula that is developed. It's primarily based on a percentage of the square footages. On the whole school fee issue, we're still having some discussions with the, with the school district and we have, we're having active conversations with them because again, the state statute isn't the clearest and doesn't provide us the greatest direction, but we're trying to work together with everyone.
Okay.
But it's clear though, on like the water district you had asked about and those types of things, it's very clear that no hookup fees, nothing like that regardless is, it can be collected.
Yeah, okay. Next one is,
And if I can just tack on real quickly, sorry, for the hookup fees and also for the separate meter boxes and whatnot, we cannot require those unless the ADU is constructed in conjunction with a new primary dwelling unit. So generally speaking, no, but there is this little exception in state law.
No, it's in here somewhere. On, in the ordinance, the draft ordinance itself, item 14. So it talks about having sufficient permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking and sanitation, including but not limited to washer-dry hookups and kitchen facilities. First question would be, do we have in our own, in our just residential district, do we have a mandate or a requirement for washers and dryers?
In terms of requiring them?
Correct.
No.
So why would we add that? I, I would suggest, you know, maybe this gets into a bigger discussion with the methodology and determining the affordability component, how low can you go? But adding everything in here, I mean, you end up with a fairly large unit just to fit all this stuff, whatever this stuff actually is. So I'd be curious to know, you know, if we don't have it in our normal requirements, we should, you know, do we want to add it to this? You know, does, does an efficiency unit really need a washing machine and a dryer if it's one person?
So, we can, we can definitely, if it's a recommendation, that we can reduce some of those things and some of those components. That's definitely a recommendation staff would take. It was just something that we had put to try to create as, you know, since these will be making our arena numbers, make them as complete of units as possible, but that's not anything that's set in stone and if there's concerns, we can definitely make.
Yeah, I guess my concern would be that you start to rant, ratchet up the cost to a point where it becomes impossible for the owners to restrict it to a level that it becomes affordable, so you end up forcing it into a moderate or above moderate. And I don't know what our methodology is and how we're determining what these, it looked like they ended up on the low, at least the nine from this year in the chart. But I would hate to lose that, you know, the theory here is that these are supposed to be affordable. And if we, if they're decked out with, you know, top-end appliances, washers and dryers, you know, the other piece would be the limitation or the ability to limit what's in there for food prep, whether it's, is it a hot plate, is it a, you know, what, what's the minimum requirement? I think we should be very specific on that, just so it's not vague to the, you know, someone who comes in off the street, they read appliances. To me, that means washer, dishwasher, sink, cooktop, oven, you know, that, you may not need all that. So I think, you know, getting really clear on that would be a good idea. And maybe just limiting it to whatever we have in our own, in our existing residential districts would be probably the easy way to do it. I did have another question on the discussion about sanitation and trash. So is there, how, how do they deal specifically with trash?
So in terms of trash, it would just go as part of the primary residential and whatever their, their purchases with CC and with CRNR. Because while there are separate units on here by state law, for example, let's just take a single-family residential with an ADU and a JADU even on there, that's still just considered to be one single-family use.
One address?
Exactly.
Okay.
So because of that, it's all shared sanitation in that sense.
Okay, so then, because of that, I'd really push hard on limiting the size of these things to no more than one bedroom. Especially in the, in the single-family neighborhoods. Think I've got most of my comments here. Okay, and then going back to the one other spot here. So wait, I, I looked at my house and I thought, okay, let me see how this ordinance itself would play itself out if I wanted to add a unit in my backyard, just a standalone ADU. I have a 4,000-foot lot and has a 15-foot rear yard setback. If I have a 10-foot building separation, that leaves five feet. I've got to put four, I have one foot by 40, 32 feet in my backyard too. So I can't actually build a detached unit in my backyard?
It, it may not work.
Okay, so we, we're, we're allowed to have requirements that, you know, they just don't fit in and it is what it is.
We have a wide variety of lots and sizes and situations in our setbacks. I met with someone last Thursday at the counter in another portion of town and asked me questions and it really, there was, again, kind of similar situation, didn't make sense to do detached, but I said, you know, there are other provisions here you could add on here or, you know, convert this and this would get you to where you want to be or add on in this area. And you can have it attached, but it's not gonna really function as a detached, so. I think it's just a matter of each case individually, which is why we continually put out there and I'll, for anyone, everyone here listening in the audience and anyone listening at home, we again encourage everyone to come talk with the planning staff early on in the process. We can help you, guide you on your path of least resistance and what are your opportunities and options on your individual lots.
Okay, great. I think that was it for my comments. Thank you. Good job.
Commissioner Murphy, do you have any questions or comments?
Just a, I'm just trying to clarify, on page six, in the, in the boxes, cannot impact historic resources listed on local, state or national registry or inventory. How is that, how is that cut up? I mean, in terms of who makes that distinction?
So there are, we do have a local inventory and we do have a local list of historic resources. The historic in terms of state and national, that's pretty standard language and is pretty, is consistent in terms of the, the state statute not allowing for impact to historic structures. And so we just were more clearly identifying what is considered by the local level, the historic type structures we would want to protect. So it would be both those that are identified or those identified as part of our inventories.
Thank you.
Sean, in, with our normal enforcement process, there's a certain maximum number of people allowed per resident before they become subject to some, some type of regulations with a sober living and those type of things. Is that going to be changed then in the city code?
Nothing in terms of what we're working on here will have any impact associated with that statutes of state. that statutes of state law in terms of when, you know, sober living and, and licensing with the states, any of those limitations, this has, will have no bearing on any of that. This is a totally separate section of the, both state statutes and our local ordinance requirements.
It, it also looks like there's a conflict between the coastal commission trying to encourage short-term rentals versus the state saying they don't want any.
So again, the state statute is pretty clear regarding ADUs and not being utilized for short-term rentals. So we do have, as the commission knows, there are some existing, and we do have a ongoing commission that is currently evaluating short-term rentals in our community as a whole, and I'm not gonna get into what they're working on, but what I can tell you is in terms of this word tonight, consistent with state, the state statute associated with ADUs and consistent with direction we've received from coastal in the past, which really has to do with their concern regarding notification of projects within the coastal zone, which we are being consistent with, and consistent with actually the same type of language we utilized in twenty seventeen. Again, we believe we have an ordinance here that is compliant with HC, the state statutes for ADU as well as coastal's view of how these should be handled locally.
I didn't know there was such a thing as a car-share location.
Say, say that one more time?
A car-share location? So they have to be within walking distance of a car-share location?
So it's always important to remember that some of these state statutes are written by individuals who are located more in urban environments than our fine coastal community of Dana Point, and so because of the, the locations in which those fine state senators come from, they put in these languages that probably aren't as particularly important, but we still have to include because it's part of the state statute.
Also, looking at the, the provision of being able to add a standalone unit, some of the units in, in our neighborhood are on a, have a slope behind them, so there could be a ten thousand square foot property. And, and so at this point, nothing has been approved to be built into the slopes. But it, by, by this definition, it looks like you could build a separate unit into the slope behind, behind the house or in front of the house, depending on where it's located, then.
So this is something definitely that we've already started to get a number of questions from HOAs. Again, what I would tell you is whenever you're dealing with these established slopes beyond just the requirements of an ADU, you're dealing with a lot of very technical and requirements associated with grading, structural, those types of things. So what I would, same thing that I've recommended and would say earlier, I would come in early and often. If you're considering any type of especially detached unit in any part of the community, please, the planning staff, we welcome you to come in, meet with us during counter hours. If we need to, we'll set up special meetings with anyone, but it's, it's difficult to kinda give a blanket statement for all the various situations that we are trying to evaluate. We did think about when we tried to develop these standards and how that would play out and apply in those types of situations as well. So again, I think it's, on a case-by-case basis, if someone's interested in doing something, come talk to planning staff, and we'll work through that process.
So the, the other thing that it looks like is that we've, we've, as a community, pushed back on less parking because in town center, we, we've had a citizens initiative to create more parking. And in, in this particular legislation, we could have homes that convert all their garages and, and dramatically increase the parking problem that we have. So encouraging bicycles and, and electric vehicles that would require some internal location to, to be charged. It seems like we've, we've blocked our own kick in, in that area. Just a comment.
I, I did have one other question or, or comment, and I forgot, so I apologize. On your matrix that was part of the staff report, the last page had incentives for affordability, I think, given the context of the previous item around our housing numbers and RENA and the onslaught coming from up north. The, you know, I am of the mindset that to the extent that we can offer up incentives to get very low affordability covenants, we should be investigating that. If we're gonna have ADUs already, we should maximize the, what they can actually do for us as a city and as a, as a function of our arena goal allocation. And in, you know, the areas where we struggle the most is on the very, very low and low. And so to the extent that we can help out with a building permit fee and in return, you know, knock off another, you know, one of the five hundred and twenty-nine units that we need to build, we should be looking at that, and I'd be all for it. I think when, when we ask for affordability from development, we, you know, and have the capacity to sort of push our own chips in, as long as it makes sense, we should be looking at that. So I would encourage you guys to keep going down that road.
To be clear, it's to utilize these incentives then to get restricted units.
Absolutely. They have, would have to fit within the methodology that would get us the best possible scenario relative to the very, very low. I, I mean, that would be my thought. I'm open to, to, to all of it, but to the extent that we can deed restrict and really get, you know, some traction on our numbers, we should be taking advantage of that if possible.
Okay, so I'll try and keep it short. A couple clarifications. So on the setbacks, the four feet, is that a minimum four feet? A maximum four feet? It's gotta be four feet?
It is, that, it is, on the side and the rear, the maximum encro, the maximum setback that we can enforce is four feet. So it can be five feet, it can be ten feet. It just can't be three and a half.
So it's a minimum of four feet, then?
Yeah, it's a, yeah. That's the maximum we can enforce, yes.
And then on the unit size, I guess it's on page fourteen, number seven, it talks about the ADU not exceeding fifty percent of the habitable area. And then it says attached-detached ADU shall not exceed eight hundred and fifty square feet for one bedroom or one thousand square feet for two bedrooms. So that is that eight hundred and fifty and a thousand, or whether they're attached or detached maximum, correct?
Yes.
So if you convert your garage and it's twelve hundred square feet, you can only build out a thousand of it for a two-bedroom.
Say that one more time.
So I mean, if you're, 'cause if you're converting your garages to ADU, which you can do and get rid of your parking, and if your parking is, if you're, I have a very large garage. It's not this big, but if you have eight hundred square feet and you wanna do a one-bedroom and that's seven fifty, then you just block off square, I, you know, it's, you're never gonna be equal.
Yeah, and I think that if you, in essence, you have two requirements, kinda two thresholds, if it's an attached condition, you can't exceed fifty percent, and then you have also those extra limitations. So Chair Opal, as you're saying, you, let's say you live, let's say your existing living space is sixteen hundred square feet, and like you said, you have a, let's say you have a thousand-square-foot garage, then you would be limited to eight hundred square feet as part of your maximum, so you would, you wouldn't, for a one-bedroom, your maximum would be eight fifty anyways, but you can do less, right? And actually, again, there's lots of very interesting numbers in the state statute, and we can get into them even further, but I would say that your thought process is correct.
Yeah, it's just, it's confusing when it says the twenty-five percent, but then there's another restriction, it's not clear.
Yeah, it's, so if it's attached, you do have the double hoop, so we'll try to see if we make that.
And then a couple things on the junior ADUs, there's a comment in here that it may require a building permit. So what, what would be my condition when I would not require a building permit? So on page seventeen, at the very top, item B, it says multifamily zoning district, districts. It says all JADUs may require building permits and must meet building code standards.
That should definitely be a shout, we'll change that. Yeah. That's a question, no, thank you.
That's fine. And then tagging on to some of the comments that Vice Chair Nelson had here, too, with respect to what is in a kitchen, the junior ADUs are more specific when it talks about kitchen facility with appliances, food preparation counter of reasonable size in relation to the size, storage cabinets reasonable size in relation to the size as well. So he had questions and comments about the ADU, but the, the JADUs are even more specific. And then lastly, on the junior ADU, the definition, it just talks about separate sanitation facilities. It doesn't talk about eating, cooking, anything like that. And the ADU has all of that. It talks about provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. But the junior ADU just talks about sanitation.
So those came directly from the state statutes on each in terms of those definitions, and the state statute regarding JADUs does allow for some flexibility regarding, it requires you to have access to sanitation, but it can be a sanitation facility that you share with the primary, in essence, residents. But it does require that, that kitchen component or that in-room, you would say, 'cause it's pretty much a conversion of one room into a, a living quarter to have a kitchen facility. So it just has to have, I believe, access to sanitation. But again, those, those definitions come directly out of our, the state statute as written.
But the previous page would contradict that, where it says it has to have a kitchen facility with appliances. So that's where I'm getting confused by that. So if you look at page seventeen, item five, it talks about all the kitchen facilities and everything else that you have.
If I may clarify, I think earlier we just decided that we wanted to have that provision a little more general, so that needs to be reflected in all the different areas of the ordinance.
Okay. So anyone else?
So do I need to open it up for a public comment, then?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll open it up for a public comment. Are there any requests to speak?
No, Chair Opel.
All right, so we will close the public comment, and then I don't think that we need to vote on this since it was a workshop as well.
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll just close that item. And then we'll move on to item F, new business. We don't currently have new business. So we'll move on to staff reports.
I have nothing to report tonight, thank you.
All right, any commissioner comments?
Yeah, it was, I just commented before the meeting that all of the staff is looking particularly dapper and well-dressed and well-groomed tonight. So I wanted to get that on the record.
All right, if there are no other comments, and I will adjourn the meeting to our next scheduled meeting on March twenty-third.